Percentage of the volume or something.
That's about that slow.
I think that's in the written couple of years.
Yeah.
So it's to avoid the volume.
So it's so since I got is PC isn't super concerned with calculation would like it to remain something simple that's
Yeah.
It's definitely simple.
Then both possible.
You'll certainly.
I don't know that the West Van version is so complex. I think it would be worth giving that some thought.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I think the version we have now is not that.
Yeah.
Um, and certainly it's certainly again it's not unique to use what it is.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, definitely going through the examples if you're always like, oh, ours is better than a lot of people. But but somebody said you can tell how detail people get engraved depending if you have if you have urban flat lots versus if you're somewhere with steep. So West Van gets quite complicated because they have steep lots and they have people with lots of money who are willing to right and they're paying for spare footage. They're willing to like play all the games to get your maximum spare footage. You end up in more detail.
And then there's Lions Bay that covers stretches without a roof.
Yeah, I saw a few of those. I was like, oh, okay, I guess so.
Yeah.
Without a roof.
We have some challenges in our bylaw. I think you can put it inside your, I think, including retaining walls that are essentially fine.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Um, so it sounds like keep it simple, Sam.
Yeah, yeah. And so the next one I was in touch with was lot coverage.
Yeah.
So let me find their definition. So and so like in the SR two, this is essentially in most of our zones, we go lot coverage. So lot coverage, the percentage of the lot area covered by the horizontal footprint of all buildings and structures, including accessory buildings or structures. So this this comes into play like just about every lot in definitely some point is over their lot coverage. Um, a lot of houses in um, the bay like in the loop are at their lot coverage or when they rebuild, they're all at their lot coverage. So we actually come up, people, yeah, figure out exactly what they do and build into that. So how we interpret it right now is we say horizontal footprint and since you do that, we look at essentially on the site plan where it meets the ground. Um, where it gets funny is where there are, like when there's a roof overhang and the pillars come down, we say, okay, that's included in your lot coverage.
So they don't have pillars. It's not included?
Yeah. And same way that people do, if you would do a bay window or a dorm or out again.
If it doesn't come down to the ground.
It's not touching the ground because we'd say it's not changing the horizontal footprint. So footprint being where it's, you know, impacting the ground.
Okay, so if you had a big cantilever deck or something, it wouldn't be included?
Yeah.
So is that a problem?
I mean, again, it's that problem of, you know, like I say, we have lots of problems that are right at the limit. And so I tend to feel it's a problem anytime where people can build things that feel like that they're not, that's not actually what council intended. And I would tend to say that if council thinks that well, on small lots, maybe it's not fair. People should have more lot coverage. Then we should just change and give people more lot coverage rather than people saying, I'm now gonna, you know, my bedrooms on each side are just gonna project out. I'm gonna steal beams and then we're gonna want you to feed out each side. I'm not gonna touch the ground over six inches above the ground. I feel like, well, that seems like, you know, council set a limit and if it was an appropriate limit. If it's not appropriate, we should just change the limit and rather than.
I know where there's one of those.
Where are we doing for percentage now?
Um, ten percent plus a hundred square meters.
Ten percent plus a hundred square meters?
Yeah, yeah.
Plus a hundred square meters?
Yeah.
Another house?
So on, yeah, so basically means like that's the SR two. So that's our, that's deep bay. That's um, stunt point. So basically means if you're one acre in size, you max out at the five hundred square meters. And that comes down to that.
And it includes accessory buildings?
Includes accessory buildings. So if you have a garage and a wood shed and stuff, that all counts within it. Um, and if you have decks, that counts with it too.
There's no upside limit?
Yeah, to a maximum of five hundred square meters.
Regardless of size of the lot?
Yeah. So like I said, in the SR two, that means at an acre, you've maxed out. That's right. Just about if you're point four hectares, you get five hundred square meters and that's your maximum. Um, in the rural, it goes up to fifteen hundred square meters, which is like sixteen thousand square feet. And you hit that maximum at ten acres. So if you're Cape Rogers Curtis, you can build sixteen thousand square feet of coverage.
In the definitions, what's excluded? Fireplaces, stairs, stairs?
So that's the floor area in the lot coverage. This is all it says and nothing's excluded from the lot coverage. So when we go floor area, we have exclusions, but lot coverage just says part of the whole.
So that would include the balcony, says steps going down, back porch, that would all be part of your lot coverage.
Well, so again, that would be included with what touches the ground.
So what do you, do you have a recommendation or are you looking just for?
Why, why not just have a maximum lot coverage period as opposed to a hundred square meters? You know, plus a hundred, you know, plus up to a max.
I think because it changes with lot size.
Well, it would, it would change. But if you said, I saw, if you said, you can actually uh,
Yeah.
build on fifty percent of the lot.
Square meters.
Then as a lot gets bigger.
Yeah.
You get bigger.
Yeah.
So what's wrong with a simple thing like that?
So not how that's, I mean, the hundred square meters plus the percentage means essentially as you get smaller.
Square meters.
You don't get smaller in the same percentage. You're smaller, you can cover more of your lot.
Right.
And in part, that's because it's like.
To a rhythmic scale or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. You'd end up with a curve that curves.
Yeah.
And in part, that's because that essentially means, you know, if they're on smaller lots, they have to put them down for lot coverage. They can build a house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gibson's is the most, oh, it's, it's really scary. Uh, yeah, pretty much everything, including painting. Um, it's counted. The um, I think one that I run across before and that I find kind of challenging is roof overhang. So it's, it's the, it's as if if you were flying over the lot and you're looking down, everything you see, which means the roof, not the building, but the roof is included in the lot coverage. And that, that to me in our, in the west coast climate where you want big roof overhangs because it rains a lot is a disincentive to do the right thing.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think that part that I think is really problematic is we don't do that here.
Yeah.
Some areas exclude um, decks that are less than two feet above the ground.
Yeah.
We don't exclude anything.
No.
Patio are excluded, aren't they?
Patio, so we would say, yeah. In our interpretation, we'd say it's less than two feet.
Yeah.
That it's not a building or structure. It's why it's bigger. It's patio.
So it's part of our landscape. It's not, not a lot of coverage.
Yeah. But if you go up three feet, then it's no lot coverage.
Right.
Yeah.
And that can be tricky on a, there's a less sloping ground.
Yeah.
You can suddenly get more than two feet above the ground in a room.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Right.
Unless you have a deck that, yeah, goes.
Yeah, yeah. So, but this particular component of the bylaw has probably not been challenged or hasn't?
I think, I think it more gets challenged in sort of the overhang, like projections. People start asking them all, how far can I project my building out?
Right, yeah.
They still have to meet the setbacks and setbacks. That's, that's for the eaves as well, right?
So yeah, so you allow the projection of into the setbacks of the eaves.
That's, that's a different, that's a different thing.
Yeah. And I think that's probably a future ABC event we're talking about, some exceptions, so.
But the currently, the eaves around a building on bone are not counted. So but what, what Dan is talking about is if, if you, if you were to build your house like this and then the lower floor, the ceiling is here, right? This piece is not counted. Your, your lot coverage is limited to that piece.
Why wouldn't you count the overhangs and the eaves and just change the percentage? I mean, I don't know. I don't know either. That would be the simplest way to do it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, I actually think the, the, you can keep the, you could um, could not, you could continue to exclude roof overhangs, but not exclude projecting volumes of the building.
Yeah, I think some of these definitions talk about measured from the outermost perimeter of all buildings.
Right.
Or something like that.
So, so, you know, so if you've got a bay window, that counts.
Yeah.
Uh, cause that's a projection of the volume of the building. But if you've got a roof that goes beyond the bay window, that doesn't.
Yeah.
And that's, to me, that's.
Well, matter of effects, rainwater and absorption and things like that.
Yeah, it's true. Like if your roof goes out forever, your vault would be greened more than.
Yeah.
You should basically try it.
Yeah. So, so I, what I'm hearing around the table of commission here, Dan, is that um,
Keep it simple.
The, well, yes, and any, any building volume, irrespective of how it's supported.
Yeah.
By air, by post, by a foundation should be counted on that.
Yeah.
If that, and I agree with that change, would that have changed a bunch of permissions that have gone through?
Um, I mean, probably some, yeah. Some would have, yeah, well, some will have, will have said, well, do your over your lot coverage. And they'll say, well, we're just gonna, you know, we're gonna project out four feet this whole bit.
So, but are they gonna have?
So yes, then if, if they burn down and they came to rebuild, we would say now you have to rebuild under our current bylaw, current definition of lot coverage. So they would, so as long as the building's there, it doesn't matter. Building burns down after rebuild, yeah. To me, they're in the current. I mean, it's not different. Like, I think almost every building in stunt point is over our lot coverage. At least everyone that I've encountered.
So anyone that burns down?
Yeah.
They're toast.
Yeah. And as they're doing renovations, they're trying to figure out, because you can repair and maintain.
Yes.
Your, or over, as long as you're legally built at the time, as long as you sit there trying to figure out how they can swap stuff out and.
Are they that much over that that's not going to issue?
Um, it's more, it's, it's become a bit over. You kind of, I think, be renovating, you don't really wanna give stuff up to stay at your over.
So um, is it, you're asking really, the question you're asking the commission is about how to interpret that definition, not about whether there should be change to the percentages.
Yeah, yeah, I would say that's a different question.
Because what Bowen Allen is currently doing, particularly if we reinforce the concept of cantilevers being included
Yeah.
uh, is consistent with virtually everything.
Yeah, yeah. And I would say like most people, you know, they know that's their maximum, their sort of design, and they don't go the
Right.
the gimmicky route.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. The only one I saw where roofs were included was it doesn't really matter. But that to me spoke of the others.
Yeah. I've seen, yeah, some too say like you can have a projection of a certain amount, like they limit it.
Yeah, and that's the thing. All the roofs in the municipality have two foot overhangs.
Yeah. You could make it bigger. You could say one point two five meters, something like four foot.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Cause, cause Northland, I'm not sure it's lot coverage for, for, I think maybe. Did you look at this shit, Northland?
Uh, I'm not sure. It's on a list.
Cause there's something there, but they, but they have a four foot a lot of roof over.
And so every roof is four foot?
No, but they're bigger. It's about. Um, yeah, so.
Um, the last one, floor area. So this one, like, as we said, not many of our zones regulate floor area, but where we're finding it now is that things that we do regulate for floor area are secondary suites and detached secondary suites.
Right.
So they have a floor area limit, and so we're seeing more applications where they're, they're coming up against the, the limits. So, so floor area.
Why do we put a limit in?
So we have a limit for secondary suites?
Yeah, but why?
Why? In part, I mean, secondary suites is building by, um, building code. And then in part, I think it is that if it's a secondary suite, then it's, it remains secondary.
So fifteen centimeters, that seems obvious, like six inches, people would have.
So we, we did have a funny, yeah. So, so how, yeah, how we calculate it, so we have some of the horizontal area minus fifteen centimeters. And I didn't want to get a discussion with somebody because they deducted fifteen centimeters from both walls. And we should know you get one fifteen centimeter deduction. We exclude stairs, vertical spaces, and blah, blah, blah. So, yeah, so one, one issue of the fifteen centimeters, so.
Why don't they measure from the inside?
Yeah, so that's the question we get is essentially people wanna build thicker walls because they're way too efficient.
Yeah.
So what's a way to do that? So, yeah, measure from the inside. Um, I think our building inspector, when I brought this up, he said, well, why don't measure to the inside and then add fifteen centimeters as a way to essentially you'd end up with the same number. If you build normal sized walls, then here's this is gonna, fifteen centimeters is half of the wall width. If you measure to the outside and deduct fifteen centimeters, or you measure to the inside and you add fifteen centimeters, in theory, you'd end up with the same number. Unless somebody's building thicker walls and eventually they get that as a bonus.
Well, a typical wall is fifteen.
Yeah. So by deducting fifteen, we're saying we're, we're going to the midpoint of the, of the two walls.
Oh, cause you're not saying deduct fifteen all the way around?
Yeah. No, so we would measure.
That's not clear.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying. That's what we got in touch with somebody.
So you're saying the fifteen is from the center.
Well, well, in essence, what we do is we go, we go all the way from the top to all the way to the bottom and we deduct fifteen centimeters once.
I see.
And so what, what it, what it's intended to do is to go to do the midpoint.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a recent change too, relatively recent change, let's say over ten years, to a lot of bylaws because of thicker walls.
Yeah.
And, and you know, now we're getting, now we're looking at more and more, there's gonna be insulation added to that, and we have it even thicker and like, how do you do that?
Yeah.
I think Greg's idea of using the inside and adding to it probably makes more sense. The, cause the outside is becoming a real movable piece.
Or why not just leave it at the inside?
Yeah.
Why do you add anything?
I don't get that. So I could probably just like initially while you do it, you say, well, you're worried about the volume of the buildings. You measure to the outside. Cause you say, you know, that's, that's the effect that people see on it. But then you say, well, we wanna encourage
We want.
thicker walls without going inside. But then at some point, you're saying, well, now it's not, you know, now you're ending up with a bigger building again.
But it's, but it's.
Imperceptible.
Yeah, yeah, in the scheme of things, why not just make it really simple and just.
Say to the inside.
It's on walls.
Like floor area.
Yeah.
Yeah, inside.
Well, as soon as, you need to understand how the definition is used.
Yeah.
Not just what the definition is. Because if, if we, if we have floor area ratio in a zone.
Right.
That's gonna be used. And if it doesn't, the floor area ratio doesn't come into, is not a factor in a zone, that doesn't matter so much.
Yeah.
It's a more, that's a more general way to keep the density down. So if you measure to the inside face of walls, and if you've got twelve inch thick walls, you're getting greater floor area than.
But is that a problem?
Well, then you're, you're, the, um, will the FSR count against, you know, it would be in your favor.
Yeah, unless you're to the inside, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's pretty marginal though, you know, so I think.
It's marginal and it's simple to, to just skip the fifteen centimeters.
And just say to the inside.
Yeah, just say to the inside.
It's a big lot of floor area. That, that, that's six inches.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Well, it gives you another foot in the floor play, really, in the extraction.
Yeah, I've been in a large, a large building, that's, that's a lot, it can be a lot, a lot of squared feet.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just.
I think when you're looking at a building, a, a foot here or there, looking at a building, a small building or a big building, it's just gonna be imperceptible. Nobody's gonna go, oh, my gosh, that's too big. And take one that's a foot shorter and go, oh, that's fine. You know, it, it, but you know, there's a lot of
Yeah.
uh, calculating and all that kinda stuff and stuff that makes it difficult to, to work with. I don't, that would be my recommendation.
What, just do the.
Just do the, just measure the inside, inside walls.
Yeah, I think that's it.
So Salt Spring measures to the outer surface of the walls and then subtracts the average thickness of the walls. That's it.
Well, that's, that's sort of, I guess, you know. Then when you have an articulated building, that's got, that's a really complicated.
Yeah, if you're, if you're just consistent and this is the way it is and.
And Gibson's does what everyone's talking about, measures the interior face of the exterior walls.
Yeah, yeah. Or the glazing line of the windows.
Ooh, gee.
And it hits the wall containing windows.
Yes, every, every window you step out, you gain a little bit of area.
Right, I guess that's, yeah, like here, you measure.
There you go. Three inches that go across the width. Yeah.
Yeah, just simple inside measure.
So then the second piece then, so we're just working right now, I think not including stairs seems to make sense. It's fairly.
Those are pretty.
Are they, are they double counted on bone?
Are they double counted?
Stairs.
They're excluded. No, if there's two sets of stairs and two different levels.
Yeah, you'd exclude both.
Oh, exclude both.
Not to very conservative space. So why?
Elevator?
Yeah.
That's what I've always took it to mean. But I guess it would be a vertical service base, probably, yeah, dumbwaiter.
Yeah.
A vertical service base could be mechanical, duct shafts and things like that.
You can't not use the space anyway.
They're not habitable spaces.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is why they're excluded.
Um, but then, so the next piece, having a floor and ceiling two meters apart constitutes a story. So that's the other one that we've seen. It's a widespread use of.
Would you, would you?
Two meters being, that's six and a half feet.
You can build an accessory building on bone that's actually two hundred square meters, not a hundred square meters.
Oh, because it's, I, I.
Because you, you build the box and then you put bays on all four sides that are two meters high. They don't count in the floor area. You do that all the way around the building. So you've got, you've got a building which on the inside looks like this.
So that's similar to that last thing with the exterior you build out on a pillar?
So, so each of these pieces
Yeah.
is less than two meters.
Correct.
You can do, you can do stuff without two, two meter space. I could walk into two meters, no problem, right?
Well, six and a half feet, it's, it's pretty odd, but.
So the, um, the duplex is up in Kate's Hill. One of them has a full basement.
Yeah.
So it's the entire size of the, the house is six foot six and a quarter.
Six foot six?
Yeah, cause it's, so it doesn't, it's not included in the floor area.
And is it, it's liv, live space?
It's livable, yeah.
Storage space?
It's not according to building codes, it's not livable.
Yeah, I mean, stairs go down to it.
Right.
Right, and it's.
The building code has, has specific floor to ceiling height requirements.
So is it centi?
It varies from room to room.
Oh, okay.
So bathroom can be lower than the kitchen. And then, and then also it's, it's a certain height across a certain percentage of the room. So living room has to be eight feet high for, for close to the area.
Okay, all right. So I mean, so, so I mean, that one, I would propose just changing to something like one and a half meters or something and say if it's a crawl space, then it's a, it's a crawl space and it's not.
Yeah, I think that would.
Yeah.
So actually, the two meter height is not that uncommon. It's, a lot of the golf grounds, it's, it occurs. Um, so while, you know, I was being sort of facetious, it actually can lead to some interesting architectural solutions. Like I did a little studio for an artist client of mine. And it, we were allowed a limited size accessory building and it was limited in floor area. And so we punched out a couple of little two meter high bays. One of them had a fold down bed and a guest. And, and the other had all of our art supplies in it. And it, and the overall look of the building was actually enhanced by these little punchouts. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure that I, you know.
Now, when you're talking, but when you're talking about punchouts like that, that, that why, why are you saying they wouldn't count? Because of horizontal?
Cause they're less than.
Cause they're less than two meters.
They're two meters, I see. So, so basically a low ceiling punchout is what you're saying to.
Yeah, it does.
Gets a.
Or high floor, but yeah. Yeah, so you.
So I think, yeah, so I think the community is great. I just, I, um, it's really is, um, what is it negatively impacting if we?
I, I think, I think it, that even that makes the building a little more interesting.
Yeah.
And so who cares? You have a little, a little sitting area there or something here.
And if somebody builds a six foot six crawl space, then, then they put people in, um,
But, but I guess, I guess I would come back to the thing again of saying with a bylaw that says you can build this much. And this is what council feels is you can build this much.
Yeah.
That essentially allowing people to have, not even creative, but like, like I'm saying, some of these are quite extensive areas that are under two meters. Yeah.
Well, you know.
So look at like, like Salt Spring goes one point eight, or Gambia goes one point two meters.
Vancouver's one point two.
Golden goes one point five, Matt's supposed to be one point three.
One point two?
The other place that it, it shows up is in the attic, right?
Yeah.
So if you've got a, a building, let's, let's say it's a two story building and then the roof does this. These triangles over here where you can't live.
No.
Don't get counted against you.
Yeah.
So on bone, those triangles are bigger.
Cause it's two meters.
Because it's two meters.
Oh, I see.
You have two meters on the edge, yeah.
Correct. So, so if your building is like this, you've got, you've got a piece of your attic space, triangular piece of your attic space that is either gonna be counted against you and you can't live in it, or you don't, you're excluded. So there needs to be some exclusion. Um, where it's getting a bigger chunk of that, quite a bit bigger.
Yeah.
If you take two meters.
Well, that's, you know, then, but then you're adding square footage into your, into your building. It becomes.
Yes. Ken is like a decent direction.
Feedback.
No, it's, um, I'm not, that's, it's an issue.
Well, are we, um, excessively, um, against extra square footage? Like are we, are we being too?
Restrictive.
Restrictive, yeah, that's.
Like, I mean, I can come back to the thing of being, you know, people are building detached secondary suites when it comes up more. And people are trying to push it, right, to see how much they can build. Then maybe that's saying, well, gee, council should allow bigger or they should come for a variance to build bigger. They're thinking, well, no, I'm, I'm away from everyone. I'm not bugging everybody. That's great. Come for a variance.
Yeah.
And that's the sort of the problem.
And it won't be reasonably denied. Like it's, it's a, that's the, the, um, thing. Cause I think the more reasonable size a secondary suite is, the more likely they're gonna be built and rented in order, you know.
Yeah. Right.
Are you gonna come up with some definitions and bring it back to the committee for review?
Yeah, like I think in terms of how this, this'll work, I think there'll probably be, you know, maybe come for a few more meetings with different aspects. And then we'll go into council and say like, here are all the things that were sort of flagged as suitable for an update. Maybe we'll draft a bylaw and then come with a bylaw with everything we've talked about to say, and then we have, you know, an amended bylaws, so we'll do the readings and referrals and everything. This is essentially just the first kick at the camp where I felt like rather than bringing a bylaw with like a whole bunch of changes and say, let's just go and look at, talk on each one as we go through, so.
So what do we think about that? See with two meters?
I'm sensing Dan will like to see it low. Sorry, but I'm.
Jumping, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, yeah, so again, you know, people have one point eight, one point five, one point two, something, something that says if you can't stand in it.
I think that's, I think that's a key.
That is the key. Is it habitable enough? At one, at one point, at four feet, one point two meters, it's a space you can, you know, store your unused suitcases in. But you're not gonna be able to there.
Yeah.
Um, where if it's two meters, you can obviously do stuff in two meters. So.
Could you, could you have it at about five feet or something? It's not easy to, you couldn't live in there, but then you'd still have some good storage.
I think some, one is one point five meters. Golden is one point. I think so, one is one point five meters, Golden is one point five meters, so that's.
Yeah, it's four meters, that's really hard to.
It's horrible to put stuff in.
Old meat doesn't like.
You don't have to make it.
You don't have to make storage.
You could build the space and have it count, right?
What what about uh what about keeping the two meters? Uh because I'm I'm thinking uh that if you create a basement or a partial basement, when this looks like a slade or something. Uh it it is not habitable, designated as habitable, so, no, if if the bylaw officer, if they saw it habitable, habitated, could use it, but, you know, you've got your uh you've got your water treatment and your hot water tank and, you know, you know, various things that somewhere you have to store, but that's not excluded, you know, in your main space.
Yeah.
But that's not really usable space.
They could, they could, they could make it seventy nine inches tall, which is still quite habitable, and then it's not counted as square footage.
It used to happen in Vancouver where they would, they would put in these kind of temporary concrete walls and fill the spaces up sufficiently enough high, and then when they got their occupancy, they knocked the walls.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Space. Um so it kind of pros and cons, I mean, I I I appreciate what you're saying, though, is, cause it, it's kind of, you know, if for site reasons, whatever the site reason might be, it just poor bearing or something, you end up having to excavate down, and suddenly you end up with a basement that's gonna count against you in the floor area, because, you know, for no, if you don't fault it your own.
That actually happened on my thousand square foot house, cause we had a mid mid level entry, which, because we didn't blast out more rock to flatten everything. I ended up with about a twelve foot small space underneath the landing on the house, but where we have our utilities and stuff, and thank goodness, because we're in there all the time doing stuff with the filtering system and all that, uh and then then there's tiny crawl space under the main part of the building. Uh and I don't know actually whether we had to calculate that utility room space on the sort of basement separate entry, I mean, it wasn't, it was small, I mean, the whole area is the size of this.
Well, you wouldn't anyways for a house, cause like just for a single family house, we don't have, we don't count your floor area.
Right.
We would just count your lot coverage.
Oh, we're talking about.
The floor area just comes up, I mean, it comes up now for secondary suites, detached secondary suites, it comes up accessory buildings, there's a maximum total for the lot in terms of floor area for accessory buildings, and then it comes up anywhere where we have FSR.
Well, this is intended to be a secondary building.
And what, sorry?
Hence the, you can build a hundred square meter, or sort of, the ten square meter shed anywhere on your property, you can make it a lot bigger this way, but but floor area still uh is still a factor in that little shed.
Yeah.
Uh whereas for a house, it's not.
Yeah.
Uh because we don't use the floor area ratio concept for houses. Yeah, I think the only danger that I can see is that if you, if you end up in a crawl space that's over whatever that is, you could suddenly have a whole floor of your building kind of against you.
Yeah.
Because we we don't exclude anything in floor area, and typically there aren't exclusions, basements are counted.
Yeah.
So if you build a distillery in the cove and dig down, that window is concrete space, it's gonna get against you.
Yeah.
But.
Not a lot of interest coming out of here. No, I mean, it 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 becomes a real issue when you have a sloping site, and 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 you're gonna end up with something down there that's not gonna, it may be high, but it may not be deep.
Yeah.
To, you know, so maybe it's limited in in size or depth or something, uh but your building is gonna need to go down that far.
Uh yeah, I don't think that's a real issue, I don't think people get too excited about that, obviously, there's not gonna be anybody living in there if you've got four feet of flat space and then it's going up the side.
If you have just open space under your building, it won't count, like if it doesn't have a floor, it's not captured. So if you're building, you know, you've got your foundation wall, but it's just right underneath, it's not, yeah, cause it says it's having a floor and a ceiling.
Right, I'd be very suspect if somebody put in there, you know, a ceiling of just an inch under two meters, because obviously they're gonna, it's gonna be habitable space, there's no question, if they're not, you know, it's not being considered.
For short people.
Well, yeah, with excluding. And if you did change it down to five feet, you'd find that everybody just went down to two feet or something.
I think the one thing that that we should be mindful of is that it's, there's the potential, I imagine, going forward, that at some point, the floor space ratio concept will be adopted by the municipality, you know, residential sites. And whatever the definition of floor area is, will start to impact houses as well.
Yeah, I mean, I see our challenge is we should create almost variety in sizes, like all of, like all of Deep Bay are essentially, they're like quarter acre lots, and we don't allow quarter acre lots even in that zone. Like yes, our choose a minimum lot size of half an acre.
Right.
So I mean, I guess similar to lot coverage, but say, you know, if we said like point six or something, it would be such a big variation between, like the large lots, you end up with more floor than you'd ever possibly use, and your little lots might be more restricted.
I think the one that I brought to you was a three years ago, they call the Gary's, they have a house.
Yeah.
And out at Eagle Tree.
Yeah.
With the circular block.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's a beauty.
Yeah.
Yeah, where the front and rear and side lot lines and.
Yeah, those ones.
It's a sixty foot diameter circle, your lot coverage is pretty limited.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I'm I'm, I'm a no, I'm not sure that I would be in favor of setting floor area maximums in anywhere, I mean.